All right, well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Tuesday, March 18th, public meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners. I want to welcome everybody in attendance today and everybody that's tuning in online. Thanks for coming out. I call this meeting to order if everyone would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Commissioner Tishnall will lead us in the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would bow with me, please. Precious and loving heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for this day that you've given us. Lord, we thank you for every individual that's here, and, Lord, we just continue to praise and glorify you for all that you do for us each and every day. Lord, we just ask that this meeting would be held in accordance with you, and everything that we say and do would be pleasing to you. We do all this in thy precious holy name.
Please proceed. Mr. Noll, any additions, corrections, or additions to the public meeting agenda?
There are none.
Hearing none, we have motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion of second, agenda approved by mutual consent. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting? Are there any concerns, questions, or changes to the minutes? Hearing none, can we get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Minutes are approved by mutual consent. First item on the agenda is one of the things that we've been doing lately. It's a good program to recognize some great Garrett County businesses, and this is no different. Connor, come on up and tell us what we got today.
Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, it's another exciting day. I'm up here to tell you about another incredible milestone in our community. This one is turning 35 today. Rather, back in April, they turned 35, but we're going to call it today because this is when we're coming up to celebrate it. And, you know, from humble beginnings, this was a homegrown business that has made a general impact in our community. They've added services and continue to add services. I was just very pleased to have them over there for our Business Fair Podcast where it came in for the second time where we help promote our local businesses. It's my absolute pleasure to say that Callis Auto Detailing, Mr. Rob Callis is with us today, celebrating 35 years. Rob, would you like to come up? We have a proclamation here that the Commissioners can read at this time.
All right, it's with great pleasure that we have this March 18th, 2025 Board of Garrett County Commissioners' commendation to Callis Auto Detailing for 35 years of service. We, the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, along with the citizens of Garrett County, are delighted to join together to extend our sincerest congratulations to Callis Auto Detailing on celebrating its 35th anniversary. Since 1990, the entrepreneurial spirit and unwavering dedication of Rob Callis transformed a simple bucket and scrub brush into a thriving auto and aerial detailing business that has served the needs of Garrett County residents and the surrounding community for over three decades. The attention to detail, convenience of services, and professionalism has made Callis Auto Detailing a trusted name in our region. Congratulations on this remarkable milestone of 35 years of outstanding service. May your success continue to inspire and grow for many years to come. Signed, Commissioners Tishnall, Savage, and myself. Congratulations, and we look forward to 35. Anything you'd like to say?
I would just say, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for being with me for 35 years, past, future, and present clients.
Photos to take.
I'll let Claire go first. Oh, Henry. Hey, Claire. We're good with this now.
All right.
All right, congratulations. All right, the next item on the agenda, we do have some bid awards from the Purchasing Division. Mr. Noll, what do you have?
Yes, sir, we have two. The first one is bid 25-0206 Pump Station 1-1 and 2-1. Two bids were received, Fitesol Excavating and Paving in the amount of $386,767.24, and Ridgeline Industries in the amount of $228,676. The Purchasing Department recommends awarding the bid to Ridgeline Industries in the amount of $228,676.
Any questions on it? We'll take these as a slate once we get through them. Are there any questions on bid number 25-0206?
Are we within budget?
Yes. The second one is bid number 25-0306 Galvanized Steel Modular Pan Trust. This is for the Allen-Fike Bridge. One bid was received from Arcro Corporation of America in the amount of $157,700. The overall budget for this project is $290,301, and that's over a two-year period. For this current fiscal year, FY 2025, we had budgeted $100,000, and we have, for FY 2026, we had $100,000 budgeted. That'd be $92,400 for the design of the bridge, and for the bridge itself is $157,700, and the installation is $100,000. That gives us, we're over budget by $59,790 for this project. Since it is over two construction cycles, and we want to get the bridge ordered now, I'm asking for, in addition to approving the bid, for a budget amendment in the amount of $59,790 so that the bridge could be ordered before the end of this fiscal year on June 30.
And that $60,000 will come out of contingency fund?
Yes, it does.
Any other questions?
Do we have, is the price guaranteed until June 30th or not?
Yes, we do.
All right. Unless anyone objects to either one of them, I'll take both of these bids in a slate for bid number 25-0206, the pump station awarded to Ridgeline Industries for $228,676, and the bid number 25-0306 for the galvanized steel modular panel trust for the Allen-Fike Bridge, including a $60,000 budget amendment of $59,790 to a Crow Corporation of America. Do we have a bid to accept those recommendations by the Purchasing Division?
I'm making a motion to accept it.
You have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion of second, question or motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There you are. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the Garrett County Department of Community Development and Planning Garrett County Water and Sewer Master Plan for 2014. Before I turn it over to Sierra for the explanation of that, I will need a motion to close the public meeting and open the public hearing.
So moved.
All right, we are now in a public hearing, and Sierra, I will turn the meeting over to you.
Sure. So, the water and sewer plan was originally adopted in 2014, and it's good for 10 years. We're actually working on kicking off an update of the plan, like a whole rewrite. In the meantime, because time has passed, projects have gotten done, and we've continued to try to improve our service, we are looking to amend the plan, just a couple map and text amendments for a couple service areas. The first one is in Grantsville, there's area of Hemlock Drive, which is in like the northwest corner of town. The town is looking to annex that area and provide water and sewer service to those people. It's in the future planned service area, but we're going to upgrade that area to existing and like, existing and under construction service area. So those areas are amended under the map. Hopefully, my map will show up here in just a second. Just me on the screen.
There you go.
Oh.
You plugged in?
I am plugged in, and let me push detect. I had this issue that I was working through earlier today. Should show up. Hey.
There we go. It's coming.
All right, so anyway, here's the map of this service area for Grantsville, and it's this little hot pink area right here, these two, I wish I remember how many acres this was. That gets added to the map, and that's essentially the change for Grantsville. Then we have the Gorman Water Service Map, which has a map amendment. So, was it last year or the spring before? There were two wells that served the water service area of Gorman. One had experienced a collapse, so we only have one well working. So we like to have redundant wells to provide that service to these people. So we've had an engineer firm go and look for new well locations and raw water lines. So they found one here, which I knew, I want to say this one is on Mountain Road, and then we added these, an additional like pump station to pull that water up to the water treatment plant for this area. So it doesn't expand any of the service area, and also, we've kind of filled in the map where the people have water accounts and it's to existing water service on the map, but it's essentially, we just added this water line and this out-of-service well. So in order for us to move forward with that project, it needs to be in the water and sewer plan, so this is the map amended for it. The other amendments involve, first of all, it's the Grantsville Sewer Service Area, same area that the town is looking to annex. It was in the planned service, and now we're have it under existing and under construction. It's highlighted in green here for this Hemlock Drive section of the town. And then the other amendments we have are to add a pump station here to the Chestnut Ridge Sewer Service Area to improve service, plus there's some lines that are being switched over to gravity from, uh, Forest Main, just overall service improvements for the folks on their systems, as well as, that's kind of related to this other project in Jennings where we're adding a pump station here at Maple Grove, or, yes, Maple Grove.
Yeah, Maple Grove.
And, thank you, and then doing some additional lines and taking out the septic tanks and putting grinder pumps in for those people, so to improve service in this area. So those are the proposed amendments. I am taking comments until, I think, late this week, and then hopefully, next meeting that the Commissioners have, we can approve these amendments and submit them to MDE for their approval, but otherwise, they're consistent with our comprehensive plans.
Commissioners, any questions for Sierra? The Gorman system is not being recommended to be expanded.
No, it's just that adding that wall of water line, so no, we're not any, any customers.
Yeah, I had a question about that last week, so I just wanted to clarify that. All right, since we are in a public hearing, are there any questions or comments from the audience on this particular item? If not, the comment period is open for?
I think it's until the week before the next meeting.
The next meeting. So if anybody online or anybody here after this meeting, if you have a comment or concern about any of this, you can email Sierra, or call, or send comments in. If there is nothing else, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the public meeting. All right. Thank you, Sierra. So that actually concludes the business section of the public meeting. Now, we will, at the conclusion of the meeting, once we adjourn, go start the budget presentations for outside agencies that we fund. Tonight, we have Garrett County Community Action Committee, Garrett County Chamber of Commerce, and Ruth and Little Library. I see all of them are present, so that must mean they want their money. So we will go to that in a little bit. At this point in time, the only announcement that I have is that our next public meeting will be Monday, April the 7th at 4:00. Mr. Noll, do we have budget presentations at the conclusion of that meeting?
Yes. They tend to be, I believe, it's the State's Attorney and Sheriff's.
State's Attorney and Sheriff's, correct. So we'll continue these budget presentations over the next couple of meetings to give us an opportunity to interact with the agencies that we fund, to see where they are and what requests they may be coming, and clarify some of those as we build our budget for next year, and then our budget, we will vote on in June. First meeting in June?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's kind of the process as we move forward. So that's the only announcement I have. I don't know, does anybody else have anything? Are there any questions or comments from the public about anything else?
A lot of us are concerned about the predicted budget cuts from Washington, how it's going to impact on the county. And I know you know yet, but what we're asking for from right now is a town hall. You could invite our two legislators and the three of you, and then the citizens of the county, and that would give you guys a chance, and our legislators, and us, all of us, a chance to find out what we're going on, get a handle on where this cut there are, and how they're going to feel like that.
I don't know, I agree with you that it's too early to tell what the impacts of any of that might be. What I can tell you is, and I'm speaking for myself, these guys can weigh in if they want to. I am deeply concerned about the state budget, much more than I am the federal budget, and what, how that's going to impact us, both the cuts that we are going to receive, plus the increase in spending that we're going to be mandated to do to fund state programs. That, right now, is my concern, but I think as we go through the budget process starting tonight, I think there will be plenty of opportunity for people to weigh in and listen. We have not heard anything from our federal delegation directly. There's a lot of bluster out there, but no one that I know right now that can sit here and tell me, this is exactly how you're going to be impacted. So that's where I am.
So what are you talking, you're saying, are you saying that?
I'm saying that my focus right now is on the state money to us, which is going to have a much more direct impact on this budget that we're trying to create for the next fiscal year.
Will that be part of the town hall session?
We'll be doing budget hearings all through the next two or three months. We got a full house tonight, people can come, anytime.
Wouldn't there be a town hall where you have the exchange and?
Have the ability to speak now.
There are a number of things on here that disturb me, for instance.
I don't know what one here is, ma'am.
Mountain Laurel Center, for instance, I happen to be patient there, and happy with it. Nursing homes, I've worked at one, sort of low and late, 35 and a half years. Community, well, let's see, Appalachian Crossroads, I worked there for five years before I went on to work in a nursing facility, nursing, oh, facility. I've worked with special population since I was 16, and I really have concerns about maybe things being old way as far as financial, age, financial help for those types of things. Farmers listed on here, being assisted by federal drought support and other programs, for instance. Community action, Head Start and Early Head Start are in jeopardy, it says. You know, Brent, this is providing somebody else's, not necessarily from you all, or it's really not specific as to who it's from. It's a concern retirees of Garrett County. Anybody else have anything to add? Healthcare service delivery, Garrett Regional Medical Center in Mountain Laurel, for instance, dependent part on payments from Medicaid, patient services and delivery. There's concern about Medicaid obviously being one of the primary things that I think that a lot of people are concerned about. And I'm getting older. I suspect a few people up here are just, I can't see behind me, I don't know.
They're all younger, probably.
They're, they're young. Anyway, I just question where this would lead to, and when I heard this morning that some program or facility, who DC was, what was I going to say, not broken into, but people pushed themselves to be entering into, and it was delivered through media that it was a privately owned nonprofit program. Just makes you want to hold up. I'm sensitive to this, and now I'm going far beyond Garrett County's concern right now, but I had two brothers who were in the Coast Guard during Vietnam. My dad was in the Coast Guard during World War II. His dad, fortunately, in a sense, was exempt from having to serve during World War I because he was a mine safety engineer and rescinded. As anybody with some, knows of history, coal was really, you know, very, what was I say, important during World War I and probably during World War II. So his exemption from having to serve was, you know, fortunate for West Virginia, for the country, and important in a sense, too. But anyway, I'm going to stop there. I'm going to load this up.
We appreciate your comments and your concern. I think it's, and I know many of you in here probably disagree with me, I think it's premature right now to speculate. We don't know what's going to happen, and, you know, we'll see where we go. I also think it's much more appropriate, this is a federal issue on a federal budget that we have zero control over locally. If we have to react, we will. We plan in advance through being fiscally prudent in advance to be able to handle situations that come our way, much like we already did with the transportation issue that Community Action went through previously, which was not due to this current situation. So I just feel prudence would dictate that we be a little bit more diligent in what we can control and what is much more in our face, which again, I will say, we can focus on the federal stuff because that gets all the news, but if you're not paying attention to the state budget, we've got a major issue right now at the state level that will impact us to the tune, right now, of several million dollars that we will need to react to, and that will be part of this budget process, which again, we're going to start to hear from this evening, and not to negate the federal stuff, yes, some of our funding agencies, Community Action in particular, does get a lot of money from the federal government. Many of our funding agencies don't get federal money. So, you know, we'll navigate that as it comes and see where we go from there. So I appreciate the question.
Could it just be made note that some people here did bring up the potential?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I don't know the process of this. So talking about like a town hall or something like that, how, is this the appropriate place to ask for something like that? Is that something that you guys would help us organize? And how long does that usually take? So if this is something we should be like looking at in the future, and it takes two to three months to get something set up, I can't see the harm in focusing, like you said, I do agree, 100% that the state budget is a big, more immediate threat, but is it possible that we could get something kind of rolling so that at least we could have questions answered, minds put at ease?
Well.
Or at least be an informed public?
Well, I can tell you this much, and I, anyone in here can have a town hall meeting anytime they want to. They don't need our permission to do that. So if you want to have a town hall meeting, you could set that up right this minute and go to town. Having said that, and I appreciate the fact that people have trust in us to, there's nothing we can inform you of. We have zero ability to, we have no inside information that you don't have, we don't have, believe me, no one from Washington's consulting us about what the impacts of any of these, no one from Annapolis is either, for that matter, so I don't know how, I don't know what us having a town hall meeting about the federal budget will accomplish when, A, we don't know what that federal budget is, and we have no ability to impact that. There are local reps for our federal delegation, Robin Summerfield, I'm sure most people in here are familiar with him, he's been around a long time, he's very responsive, you know, he might be able to get Senator Van Hollen out here, I doubt it, but, you know, those would be the people that could sit down and have real discussions about what is happening and what impacts may happen. So to answer your question directly, you don't need us to set that up, anybody could do that, so that, I mean, there is no process in that regard. Nick, you had your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to offer, I understand the concerns of everyone, and while this isn't a complete solution, we do have a business before hours coming up in a couple months with Senator McKay and Delegate Heimball that'll be in the Performing Arts Center at Garrett College. I believe it'll be the third Tuesday of May, and it'll be after the session, so things will, I mean, we still won't know what the full picture looks like, but at least as far as Maryland goes, we'll know what the legislation that got passed looks like. You are all welcome to attend, we would love to have you there. There will be breakfast, and you would have a chance, it's not exactly a town hall, but you would have the opportunity to ask questions to Senator McKay and Delegate Heimball. So I just wanted to make that, you know, it's not exactly what you're looking for, but it is an opportunity to make your concerns heard and get some information for yourself as well.
And that's done through the chain?
Then you didn't charge the public to come to that. Is that what the case is? That would be for, we do a pre-legislative forum in December, we just started doing that a couple years ago. This is separate, there would be a charge to just to pay for the breakfast, really. So there, thank you for asking. There is a charge to cover the breakfast, but we also advise you to attend in December the pre-legislative forum where we get Senator McKay and Delegate Heimball to talk about what we can expect in the coming sessions, so thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, there's been conversation about potentially scheduling a town hall. Could you commit to trying to attend if that is something that would move forward locally?
Well, if it was at a time and, you know, I can't commit when I don't know when it is or where, but, you know.
Your best attempt.
I have always said I will meet with anybody, anytime, anywhere that we can, and I'll be happy to stick to that statement personally. Yes, sir.
The list of concerns, as called concerns, is made in three. As you go through the presentation of the budget process and the budgets in review, is there maybe anything that has an effect on any of these issues that we could point that out as we go through the budget reviews?
And that's a great point, and I think as we go through this, that will organically happen. We will rely, I mean, quite honestly, we're going to rely on Chris tonight to explain his budget with Community Action. I don't want to speak for you, Chris, but it's probably too early to stand here and say, we know this is going to get cut, because we don't. So I think once the presentation- So I, I think once the presentations are made, I, I don't think there's any question that a month from now, two months from now, some of these groups may come back and say, hey, this now happened, we're looking at a difference, is there something you can do to help? I can tell you right now, and I'll go, if anyone wants to stand opposite of me on this, feel free, there is no possible way that Garrett County residents paying Garrett County taxes can backfill every single federal and state cut that happens. And if this, if the feds and the state cut everything on that piece of paper, if the expectation is that we're going to miraculously smack our hands together and fund everything fully, that, that's, that's just not, that's not reality. I'm not going to sit here and say we can't help, I think we've already shown we can do that. I think that we have done, and when I say we, I mean our staff here, and the commissioners, and, and really the citizens that hold us accountable, have done a good job of being fiscally prudent over the last several years, which put us in a position that we can probably handle some things that other counties right now can't. That includes primarily the state stuff that we know is going to come down the pike. But I think your point is very well taken, and I think as people go through their process, they're going to know better what may be cut than we are, and this is their opportunity to share that with us and, and keep us informed as we move forward. So I, I appreciate that comment, and I think that, the answer to your question is yes, we will do our best to navigate that. Frank?
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, and thanks for holding this meeting. You've already touched on one of our aspects, and thank you for doing that, because I think we're really all on pretty much the same page. We know we have an underhanded future with budget risk, you know, policy risk, political risk, and it's a, it's a troubling time for many people, regardless, red, blue, whatever. It's in my eighty years, I've never been as concerned about the future, and I've always been optimistic about the future. The good thing is that I feel we have solid leadership here, and it sounds like what I'm hearing, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, that you would be willing to participate in a town hall that appropriately addressed, along with our federal representatives, the issues that we are facing during this next six months, down before the budget. But, I mean, it's an excellent group here, a good cross-section group. I guess I'd like to hear from all three of you, are you willing to participate in that process, assuming all the kinks are worked out and everything can be arranged appropriately?
I could say when, when and if we know more, then yes. There's, there's no point to have a, a work, or session with us having the same knowledge as you, when we get more information, I would say yes.
Okay.
And I definitely would participate in it, and I don't know that, as Paul has said earlier, I don't know what conclusions we can come from a federal standpoint. Hopefully, statewide, we can, we can mitigate some of those with our own budget, but we can't mitigate all of them, we know that.
Yeah, I'm looking for mitigation of every issue, you're right, you can, we can, but what I'm looking for is a level of support, comfort, if you will, engagement, if you will, with the community in this time of uncertainty.
Frank, I think it would be foolish of any commission if an opportunity presented itself for us to dialogue with our federal partners about shared concerns of the community, I think absolutely we'd commit to that. You know, I, so sure, and, and, but I, participate and attend might be two different things. I mean, if people are looking for us to lead that, I don't think that's our role. We're not going to lead a federal discussion when we don't have any more information than anybody else, and we can't control it, you know.
That's not the question, ma'am.
So, you know, if, if it's, would you attend and share? Yeah, absolutely. I talk with representatives from our federal government fairly frequently, I'm going to meet with Representative Delaney Thursday, I'm going to share some concerns with her. Talk with the state guys all the time, as you all are well aware, we keep in constant contact. I can tell you right now, I don't think I'm, you know, sharing any inside baseball, the, the state wanted to cut some significant...